We're just gonna start. We're... Hey, most important guy. Glad we waited. I heard you were coming, that's why I'm pausing. We were started at 4:30, we've been standing for a half hour. Uh, that's cool. All right, everybody, can you double-check your phones, make sure they're on silent? And would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Patty?
Mayor Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Lit.
Here.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Additions, deletions?
No, sir.
All right, let's go, Casey. We're right up for you, thank you. Director of Golf, to the podium, please. It's got a good sound to it. I can't see you.
Good evening, mayor and council, I am here for an update on our 14th Annual Mayor's Veterans Golf Classic Tournament that was hosted in November. Just some tournament information for the residents and those here tonight. This is the largest event that the club hosts annually. We have hosted it since 2006. We do fundraising through tournament registrations, on-course games, we do raffle, silent auction, and sponsorships. All of the funds raised through this event gets donated to the VA Resource Center. A large portion of the funds that are raised are from our sponsorships, and we have several of our top sponsors here tonight. But before we do our sponsor recognition, I would like to welcome three members of the VA Resource Center from the Medical Center, Corey Price, the Medical Center Director, Steven Tillman, the Homeless Program Section Chief, and Julia Spence, the Assistant Director. And they will be taking a few minutes just to give you an update on how those funds are used.
That's good info, 'cause I don't know if we've really had this before. Hi, how are you?
Hello, good evening. I'm gonna keep my remarks very short, and I'm gonna let Steven, who's gonna really receive the funds, share what, how those are gonna be used. I just wanna thank you again, I'm Corey Price, the Medical Center Director for the VA here in Riviera Beach, and just happy to be here. Steven?
Hello, I'm Steven Tillman, Homeless Program Section Chief, thank you for having me here. So it's my first year here as a Section Chief with the VA at West Palm, and it's very clear to me how timely this event was. We have many veterans that come into the Veteran Resource Center that are indigent, low-income, homeless, and now more than ever, loss of income, loss of housing has been very apparent to many of the folks coming in, so these funds will go a long way as far as helping people get in to new housing for moving costs, utility assistance, maybe perhaps some emergency overnight stays somewhere until we can get a permanent housing plan in play. So it's been really helpful. And again, with the current pandemic, this is the most timely possible event, so thank you to everyone that supported this event.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So I'd like to take a moment to recognize our event sponsors. We would typically ask that all of them be here tonight, but with limited space and social distancing, we have our Eagle Level sponsors and above. We would still like to recognize all of the sponsors who couldn't be with us tonight. Operation 120, which is another veteran-centric, 501(c)(3) organization, who has been event sponsor the last two years. Our beverage sponsors, professional real estate advisors, Cressy Sports, Store Self-Storage and Wine Storage, Councilman Mark Marciano, Buzz Balls, Norman Barbara Chabray, Johnson Group, and DS Echens. Our breakfast sponsors this year were Sure Trust Title, Dunkin' Donuts in Lake Park, Matheson Whittles, and Coff's Towing. Our birdie sponsors was Legacy Turf, Johnston Group, Dunkin' Donuts, The Shops at IBIS, NutraTurf, Buzz Balls, and Urban Design Kill Day Studios. Our Eagle sponsors this year, which is a $1,000 sponsorship, I would like to represent Andrew George from the Honda Classic here tonight to accept the plaque on behalf of Honda Classic. PGA Corridor could not be with us tonight, representing Coff's Towing, Mr. George Russell. I'm sorry, Jeff Russell.
Thank you, Jeff.
Our dinner sponsor could not be here tonight, it was Mission Barbecue, but they did cater the entire dinner for all of the participants. Our albatross sponsors, which was a 3,000-level sponsor, from Loman Law Group, Mr. Max Loman.
Go get your plaque. Yeah. I want better towels next year out of you.
Alan Norton in blue could not make it, from DSS Incorporated, Mr. Bob Pedraza. He did say he might get caught at the office, so I was hoping he came in when I was giving my initial remarks. And TBC Corporation could not have someone attend. Our presenting sponsor this year was the Palm Beach Gardens Police and Fire Rescue Foundation. This is a $5,000 sponsorship, and as long as I've been involved, they have been the presenting sponsors, so I'd like to welcome Mr. Erwin Edens on behalf of the foundation. And we have an event sponsor, which was very unique this year, it was a matching $5,000 grant from council. Thank you, guys, so much for everything that you've done for the veterans. So Mayor Woods and council, if I could have you accept on behalf of... A huge thank you to all of our sponsors, but also to our local business partners, all of the hotels and restaurants, the salons and spas that donated to our silent auction and our raffle, they had a huge hand in this. Also, our volunteers, we had over 100 volunteers to see this event through, before, during, and after, all of the players, and then the Sand Hill Crane staff, who was on-site that day to hopefully make it a great event. So our record year, all in all, we raised $55,152.11, which we will be donating to the VA. If I could, we'd like to do the check presentation, so if I could have all of the sponsors, we'd like to take a photo. And council. Just wanted you to get some extra steps in today. Thank you.
Is that it, Casey? No?
That's it, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Congratulations, and thank you for doing such a great job organizing it.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your help volunteering, everyone, I know all of you are either players or volunteered in the events, or helped coordinate volunteers, so thank you.
So remember, next year, we talked, and we can stick mayors with other people, 'cause we got Maria, we got Mark, we got myself.
I'm gonna auction you off.
Right on. I'll come fully clothed.
Got it.
He doesn't hit the ball straight, so it doesn't really matter.
I beat you the other day. There you go.
Thank you.
All right, guys, that was fun. Division Chief Andrew Lesz, would you please come to the podium, please, sir? Thank you. How are you? Excellent.
Thank you all for calling me up here, I'm just gonna take this off, if that's okay?
It is.
We are, I'm up here to do a presentation on our beautiful, brand-new tower that was just built, sorry, sir, that was just built, and we just ran a brand-new, new hire class through it. So what you are about to see is a video that one of our fire captains put together with all film footage that we had from our own personnel. I'm gonna introduce Chief Training Officer David Silverberg, he's gonna come up and actually narrate the video that we have. It's a wonderful video, it's six minutes long, and he's gonna just go through some of the key objectives. On the behalf of the Fire Department, everybody in fire rescue, we'd like to thank the council for allowing us to get this building purchased and built without you all and the help that you have had for us to do this, it would never went through, and you'll see what an amazing structure this is.
That's awesome, 'cause I haven't been out there for no reason, so it's gonna be good to see.
Please, anytime you'd like to, sir, we would love to have you out there. So I'm just gonna just get this on and running.
How are you? Good, man, how are you?
I used to talk into board members, though.
What's that? Take you.
Talking to board members, I'm better at talking to firemen.
Don't look at us that way.
My name's Dave Silverberg, I'm Chief Training Officer, I was in charge of the new recruits that we had hired and putting them through the advanced training that we gave them with the help of the new tower. I recognize some faces that were out there in some of our training. It was a pretty intense 160 hours. We get people that have gone through the minimum standards to get their fire ticket, and when they get to us, we'll teach them our level of, you know, knowledge, skills, and abilities to serve our citizens and each other. So what you're just gonna see now is a video of culmination of about 160 hours. It's the largest class we ever had, so the class had to be split up in two separate four-week programs. So each time, it repeated once, and that's why we could get everybody into the advanced training the way that we wanted them to be successful. So with that, we're gonna play this, it's six minutes, we'll try to keep it a little low, I'll speak through some of it, you're gonna see all the different training, and it'll go through kind of quick, some of it I'll be able to catch, and tell you what's going on as it happens. Camera's the best, it's a five-story cellar, over 7,000 square feet, 7100 square feet. Anything from, that's the Class A burn room on the second floor, that we can allow light pallets and hay, put them into up to 1,200 degrees, outside car prop, showing them how to approach a car fire, handle a car fire before they ever get out on one. Electrocation training. Each morning, we had a race to put on our gear, they had to do it under a minute and a half, and then we took 25 minutes to put our gear on. Ladder training for vent enter search, saving somebody from the second window. Forceable entry with the blue door, they have to actually force entry every time they go in the tower. And then advancing hose lines wherever the fire is, we don't actually tell them, they have to seek it out, they gotta be able to move hose with limited visibility. That was our first for propane prop, can be transitioned from a kitchen to couch, bedroom fire. They also trained each morning at Cressy for 45 minutes, and that's an opinion that we did for them. Put them in gear, make them sweat and earn it. Then a lot of search and rescue, this was done with obscured peel and stick right from public, so you can put that over their mask, they can see lighting, but they can't really see where they're at, and we can watch them research. Draft training, a lot of in through the blue door, we call it from hydrant to green cone, evolution training, so realistic-based training, what they're gonna see in the street. Inside car prop right there is a liquid propane prop that we can move, transition from a car fire inside a house to a structure fire. Hose management, again, it's a lot of pressure pushing back on them, move, they gotta be able to handle that. They got two days of intense vehicle electrocation training. Jaws of Life, spreaders, we call them. You'll see here where we roll a dash, use K12s, we use every bit of, every tool that we have on cutting car. We could've put that car in a five-gallon bucket, and we didn't. We cut the car from around the patient, we won't take the patient out. That's a confined space prop that we built on the third floor to make sure the nobody's has any problems with no visibility in a very tight spot. More hose management. In our opinion, you couldn't move enough hose. More forcible entry, they got very good at being able to force a door, we gave them seconds to do it. More gear training. That there is the LP prop, we can flash fire right across the ceiling, which will help us get thermal imaging camera classes of view. And that's what the thermal imaging sees when you tell it change. Second part of the video is more evolution-based, we went from hydrant to green cone, which meant hooking up the hydrant, hooking up the truck, getting to the objective, and then getting all the way to the green cone reverse decom, because it answers. Try to save room prop. That room gets up to 1,200 degrees. That way, we can tell whether they're gonna flip out if they get a little uncomfortable or too hot. Using the thermal imaging camera again. We used one for us to watch how they moved hose through the building, and that vision right there, you couldn't see anything, it was pitch black, you could see it with the cameras. Then how to control the temperatures in a room, mechanical ventilation. This is the garage door prop that we built, actually shows them the number of cuts and how many cuts it takes them to get into a garage door, and then move it safely out of the way where you can make them move it now. And we always pick the shortest firefighter to make its out cut. Mashroom training, hose evolutions, again, all reality-based training. We want them to learn the love for the job that we have, the respect for each other and the citizens, and what they're embarking on as a career, kind of lifestyle. Hundred-foot ladder, we do parapet training. Certain parapets, a parapet is just a small wall, it could be above a roof line or a commercial building, and you won't be able to climb up on the roof, you'll have to climb over and climb down to get to the roof. So we wanna make sure nobody has any trouble. The heights are moving on a ladder. You can see in most of the training, we had masks on for SCBA's, but 100 foot in the air, we let them put their masks on so we could take a picture of them for the review. That's about 100 feet up, and we had them belay their final climb. And that's it. Again, thank you very much for that tower, it's a prized possession, great tool, and not only for the recruits who were the first ones to go through it, but our members, we've already started with made-day training and putting other training through the whole department, and it's really worked well.
So this is gonna be like a normal training scenario for everybody that's already working here?
Absolutely. Every bit of it, the training we do, we're trying to work people past the normal human reaction under stress, which is get out of the way, jump, your vision narrows, and we train past that, where your vision opens up, you can react under pressure. So even the people in the streets, we constantly are training, because it's a human reaction that you're trying to work past, so you get past the brain and into the muscles.
Very cool.
So with that said, next month, we are doing live fire training with our entire crews. So they will go through very similar training that we did with the new recruits. Just because we did with new recruits doesn't mean that it's something that's, you know, something that only a new person must know. Obviously, our people know how to do this, it's just good refresher, and with this tower, now we're able to do it. We don't have to rely on anybody else, we have our instructors, we have our tower, we can do it in the house our way, and that's the great thing about having this tower. And once again, we'd just like to thank you all for allowing that to happen.
That's how we want it done. I think we approved that thing like two years ago, something like that.
We did get a little delayed due to COVID, I know you've been hearing that a lot, but some of the equipment was coming from elsewhere, and it was delayed a little bit, but we were fortunate, more fortunate than most, being in Florida, they did, they allowed us to continue doing construction on it. Some of the parts were coming in, believe it or not, from Canada, so they got held up at the border. But you know what, we got it done in time for this recruit class, and it worked out wonderfully.
Well, just do me one favor, make sure you don't show the cops, 'cause then they're gonna want something.
They're more than welcome to use any time they need to.
Yeah.
They drive by, we just keep waving them by.
Just put a blanket over it before you guys leave.
And you're welcome out any time.
Yeah, I gotta make a run, run out there. Thanks, man. Thanks, guys. That was awesome, love that stuff. All right, the President and CEO of the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce, Noel Martinez, would you please come up to the podium? Hey, Noel.
Good evening, mayor, council, vice mayor, hello. Mr. Ferris, thank you so much for having us. With me today, I have Bianca Cologne, our Director of Events, I know she's no stranger to any of you, but first, I wanna start off by saying thank you. And thank you to the city staff, there is absolutely no way we would've been able to pull off that event in six weeks, like we did, with the amazing staff that you have. You know, I say this all the time, and you've heard me say this before, there's something special about the culture in the city, and there's just, all the way from the top to the bottom, there's this service-minded culture where they find a way to say yes, and find a way to make things work, and I know you all are very, very proud of them, and as a resident and as the CEO of the chamber, I'm very, very proud to be able to work with them every day. A quick update on the ArtiGra, very short, brief update, the event was a huge success. You know, in a COVID year, we had great crowds, we felt that we put together a very safe, socially distant event. We were very fortunate to have such a big layout this year, where we were able to spread everyone out, and everyone really, really appreciated that. The artists had a great show, we had great feedback from all the artists, they did well, they sold tons of art, they loved the new layout, they loved being able to park right behind their booths, which is something different that they weren't typically able to do. Our sponsors were extremely happy with the new location, they cannot wait to come back to next year, to hopefully, we're welcome back. And then from a marketing and PR standpoint, we just hit it out of the park. Marley from our team and Candace from your team just did an amazing job spreading the word on everything that's going on. We had more than 110 media hits on the event, we had an audience reach of over 100 million, it's crazy to think that. And then TV time, and just editorial time alone, we had over 45 minutes. So very, very proud of the exposure and the coverage that we got. Again, extremely happy with the event, we are, hopefully, will be accepted back, to come back to Palm Beach Gardens, 'cause we wanna make this our permanent home. We have so much opportunity for growth, and to take that event to the next level, we're just excited. As a token of our appreciation, we actually have the ribbon, we put it, we framed the actual ribbon that we cut that morning, and wanna present to you, present that to you this evening. So I'm gonna ask you to please come up one more time, I know you've been up and down a few times today, but just for a quick photo op.
While you're doing that, I'd like to add something. We have never had the privilege of working with you and your staff, particularly on such an event like this, and as much as you appreciate us and the manner in which our employees work with you, I was extremely impressed with your staff, their professionalism and their competency in the performance of putting this thing together. It's unbelievable, you're very fortunate to have the staff that you do, that was able to work with our group and put this thing together. I was extremely impressed, so I just wanna let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Noel, I know you're at ease anyway about coming back next year, but we've already had a little bit of internal buzz conversation, that I'm sure it'll be a lifetime commitment. It wasn't our fault that she went up north of Donald Ross Road, so we're glad you're back, bud. All right, what am I doing? Joanne? How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
You're ready to go.
I'm ready to go.
Okay, so are we. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Good.
Okay, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and members of the council, I will be presenting an update to the city's CARES Act project, oh. The Mortgage and Rent Assistance Program. Start with a little background, the city, through its participation through the US HUD CDBG program, was notified in 2020 regarding two rounds of available funding through the CARES Act totaling $482,975. These funds were allocated to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. The city conducted a needs assessment survey in September. The survey asked questions in many areas, but two key themes rose from the survey results. The first was that many residents, 63% to be exact, had their income impacted by the pandemic. And the second had to do with housing payments. Over 55% of residents were able to make last month's payment on time, but when we asked about confidence for next month's payment, confidence was low. Over 53% were not extremely confident that they would be able to make next month's payment on time. This established a need that was an eligible activity with the HUD CARES Act funding. With the results from the survey, through the adoption of Resolution 642020, the City Council directed staff to proceed with an amendment to the city's annual CDBG action plan to incorporate a rent and mortgage assistance program. This brings us to today, and it's my honor to share the progress that we've made since the council's action. This slide shares a timeline of the process, and the remainder of my presentation will focus on the program that we've developed over the course of the last two months. So we received notification of HUD's approval on January 6th, and on the very same day, our request for quotations was issued to bring onboard a consultant, as is permitted by HUD, for the rent and mortgage assistance program. The city was pleased to receive a response from Florida Housing Coalition. Florida Housing Coalition is, has expertise in affordable housing, policies, strategies to end homelessness, and community development. They're a well-known provider of training and technical assistance. We see the project team on the slide before you, and we also have Kimberly Spence here of Florida Housing Coalition, who is the project lead, and if I must say, working with Kimberly has been a wonderful experience, her expertise and knowledge has been amazing to have throughout this process. Her expertise and knowledge has been amazing to have throughout this process. So we're happy to have her on our team. The consultant's scope included developing a program criteria and policies and procedures manual to develop application forms, both paper and online, and to develop the required administration documents and communication. And the final step of their scope is forthcoming, which is the actual application review. So now I would like to share an actual overview of our program. So assistance can be provided for up to six consecutive months. We have established a maximum of $15,000 per household. The assistance can be provided for arrears or on an ongoing basis, month to month. All payments will be made directly to a landlord or mortgage servicer, so there will be no direct payment to applicants. All households must certify and document no duplication of benefits, and the application will be available March 5th at 8:00 a.m. So that's tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. What are the eligible costs? So this program covers rent or mortgage, property tax and insurance if escrowed in the mortgage payment, late fees, and utilities. The eligibility criteria. You must be a Palm Beach Gardens resident. You must show proof of a COVID-19 hardship. The impacts to your income must be because of COVID-19, and they must document that. The household income cannot exceed 80% AMI as established by HUD, and household liquid assets cannot exceed $10,000. This does not include certain government provided for retirement accounts, education accounts. Those type of accounts are not included in the $10,000 max. On the screen are some of the documents that are required to submit an application, a complete application, including identification, documentation of the COVID-19 hardship, self-certification of non-duplication of benefits, documentation of household income and assets. If you're applying for rent assistance, a copy of your lease and past due notices from your landlord. If you are applying for mortgage assistance, your mortgage statement, and a W-9 from your landlord or mortgage lender. The application is housed through Zoom Grants, which is a web, website. And the link to the Zoom Grants webpage will be on the city developed webpage for this program. And this view shows our internal staff view where we can track and monitor all the applications and the money that we are awarding. Applications will be available at City Hall in a paper format as well for those that are not comfortable with the, an internet application. And staff will still scan and work with the consultant to enter these applications into Zoom Grants, so we can track all the applications in one location. So how are we getting the word out there? We'll be using the city website, which we've, with the help of Candace, we have developed a webpage. We'll be using eBlast through the city's website. We'll be using all the social media channels. And then in person, we'll be using print flyers and A-frame signage at all city facilities that receive foot traffic. We have been reached out to by Channel 25 and understand that a story may be airing tomorrow. And a press release was also issued today. And in the future, if additional advertising is needed, we can publish an ad in the Palm Beach Post. See a flyer on your page. So we're trying our best to get the word out there in as many formats as possible. All of this has come together very quickly with coordination with not only our consultant, but many city departments. I would like to thank them for all of their hard work and coming together very quickly to get all of this put together so quickly. And they are not mentioned on this slide, but I would also like to thank the city clerk's office and the building department that will be crucial moving forward as they will be receiving any walk-in traffic due to this application. So that's the update on the program. I'm here to answer any questions. We also have Olivia Ellison, Kimberly Spence, our consultant, and my director, Natalie Crowley. If there are any questions.
Rochelle?
First question, Joanna. Can we have the slide deck tomorrow morning in our email so that we have the information available?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to provide that.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
It goes live tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m.?
Tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m., that's correct.
All right, thank you.
No, just thanks for getting this done very quickly. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Joanna.
Would you repeat how the media is, how this is going to be displayed in the media, please? Our website and all the other places?
Yes, we will be posting, we have a, we have a, developed a webpage. It will be featured on the front page of the city's website. Go back to this slide. As an item of resident interest. And we'll also be making posts on all the social media channels that the city has, as well as the routine eBlast the city website does. So there'll be emails to those groups that have signed up for that.
So there are multiple ways of getting information about this?
Absolutely. And I did forget to mention, we do have flyers over at the table here tonight if there are any, anybody that would like to pick that up.
And I guess the people that were asked to participate in the survey got the email from the city blast. So they obviously are on that same list, so they should actually get this application.
If they've signed up for the eBlast emails, they will receive that application. We will plan to do some targeted emails next week, depending on the response. But the eBlast is the main thing that will go out tomorrow.
Go ahead.
Do we know how long we're going to leave it open? Or it all depends on the number of applications and how fast they come in?
Yes, so we, we don't know what to expect as far as a response, but we will accept applications on a rolling basis until the funds have been exhausted.
Okay.
And if there's someone who has an issue with the application, will there be a helpline that they can call or some sort of support?
Yes, so they can also, first of all, call city staff. You know, all of our information is on the website. They also have technical assistance through our consultant here. And if they have issues with the Zoom Grants portal, they also have a help desk that we will link to.
Great job, thank you.
Yeah, sounds thorough. Thank you very much, Joanna.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
It feels good that we're able to do this.
What's that?
It feels good that we're able to do this.
Yeah, it's a big deal. All right, so comments from the public. I have one card. Ms. Ramona Bean, could you come up at the podium, please? And your name and address for the record. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ramona Bean. I reside at 5439 Cicada Way in Palm Beach Gardens. Good evening, Mayor Woods and Vice Mayor and everyone here, the council, and everyone in the audience. I've been a Palm Beach Gardens resident now for over a decade. I'm grateful for the opportunity to come before you. Many times I've been busy with family life, but I'm glad that there's a public comment section for us available. Like most in our city, the COVID-19 pandemic, we're all reflecting on the past year, and it of course, affected our family most profoundly. My husband and I were raising three children, and we're also under the same roof with our grandfather, who is 95 years old and widowed now for a couple of years. Recently, he was able to get access to the COVID-19 vaccine, and we're most grateful. And there's a lot of relief, of course, in the family about that. So simply, I just want to say thank you. I understand that we now have something right here in our backyard as of a couple of weeks ago. And there's many in this room to say thank you to. Of course, you folks, everyone in the city staff, even Marcy Tinsley. I think she's here tonight, yeah. Though I understand have been instrumental in helping us get a COVID vaccination site right here at the rec center where I take my kids to play. So I have heard from neighbors who were very frustrated, of course, when there was a limited rollout at first, and they are very grateful as well. So I really speak on their behalf as well. And basically, that's it. I just want to say thank you and thank you for your time.
Now, we were lucky that we were able to, well, work with Maria Marino, who you probably know was one of our council member, who is now, is it District Four or One, whatever, One. So she's now our county commissioner, and our staff was able to work with her staff. And you know, there was some talk on it going someplace else. And so it was, it was, it was really good to facilitate the Burns Road Community Center. I mean, I think I gave a statistic out last night at a meeting. We're talking, Ron, was it like a thousand, 1,500 a day coming up?
Yeah, so far it's been 3,285 today.
In a week. So we'll be rolling, you know, as soon as we get it.
Like I said, residents have been very grateful. And I did neglect to say that County Commissioner Maria, of course, has been looking out for us because she, she spoke up for us as well in the commission meetings in the county. So, but again, just thank you very much. I know, I know sometimes a lot of folks complain, but you know, we were all trying our best, even folks just being citizens and just trying to take care of our families. But it's, it's really nice to have us in our backyard, so thanks.
Well, compared to our last two meetings, we didn't have complaints then, so it's nice to have you up here and say something nice. I was prepared for him tonight. All righty. City manager?
Item, if I may. And it's, it goes right into our previous discussion. You know that with the vaccination site at Burns Road, we've done a fantastic job of coordinating, coordinating with our police department in providing the security they needed and the traffic control, which was relatively easy because it's so well organized around here. But also our recreation staff there, working with the crews that are doing the vaccinations. We provide each day that they're open three paramedics to assist in the vaccination process. The first week, they did 1,871. That was for three days. So far this week, they, and they have one more day to go, they've done 1,141 for a total of 3,285 vaccinations. Now they're scheduling again on Monday and Tuesday. They plan to do 1,000 or more doses each day. So they'll be back open on Monday and Tuesday, appointment only for 1,000 and plus or minus doses a day. And that's all the information we have so far. So they're doing great. It is relatively seamless, and it's just going as smooth as can be. We're very proud and fortunate to be able to work with Health Department and the county crews and our, our paramedics to be able to help provide this great service to citizens here in the North County. So it's been really great, no issues. So I just wanted to report that to you.
Thank you. You know, I'm going to ask a question that I don't know. I mean, Ron, I'm assuming you, you know the answer. But are they going to start blending the, say, the Johnson and Johnson? Or are we just going to get one type of shot for the county? Are they starting to?
They have been doing the Moderna, but I think they're going to Pfizer on the next round. Check for X.
Because I've had actually some people in the community ask me like, does only getting one version of the vaccine slow down the distribution? And I'm like, that's a great question. I don't have the answer to it. Or if they, they blend some of Johnson and Johnson with Pfizer, and they mix it into the community, is that hard to, to track? You know, which person gets what if they do it too much in the community? So I don't know, chief. I mean.
Yeah, so they've done a good job so far as far as, so when Johnson and Johnson comes out and they administer that, they'll just do Johnson and Johnson. But what it allows is we have another vaccine. So why Moderna? We might be short on Moderna or Pfizer, then we go to Johnson and Johnson. You must finish with Johnson and Johnson. Moderna, you can use Pfizer if you have to. But they've done a really good job making sure that when they give one, they save it for the second dose if it's needed. Johnson and Johnson doesn't need a second dose, but they've done a really good job. So what it's done is it's kind of flooded the market a little bit more and allows us to get more vaccine out. And, but right now, I don't know that anybody's, has Johnson and Johnson. It's probably, it's mostly been Moderna so far.
Does it look like we're gonna, you know, based on what they're saying in Washington, it looks like by May? Can, can you see that rollout starting to come into our community where the numbers of the vaccines are going to start increasing greatly? Are you seeing any of that yet?
You know, it's, it's hard to tell. So as they open it up, as they've done 65 and older, and now they open it up a little bit more, that's going to take up a little bit more of that vaccine. So it all depends on distribution, how fast they can get it manufactured and get it out so we can get it in people's arms. But AstraZeneca, there's some other companies that are going to also have vaccine as well. So the more they can get out there, the quicker we can get it in people's arms. But it's, it's hard to tell. It really is.
Just a lot of questions, so thank you for your time on that. All right, consent agenda. If we're not going to pull anything, can I get a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
Make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. There are no quasi judicial hearings tonight. So Patty, can you read Resolution 162021, please?
Resolution 162021, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, supporting the submittal of an application for a 2021 Transportation Alternatives Program grant to the Florida Department of Transportation through the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, TPA, for the construction of a separated two-way bicycle track on Burns Road, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Hi, Joanne, again.
I'm back.
Joanne, before we begin.
Yes.
I'd just like to explain, usually grant applications go under consent items because they're just an application. And generally, it goes before council when, when and if the grant is awarded. But this one is so special, I thought it best to bring it forward for council to see. And I think the reason that it's so special is it dovetails into our whole mobility theme and, you know, bicycles and narrowing lanes. To the point that if we get the grant and if council approves it when it does come and we eventually get to do the construction a few years down the road, it would change the landscape of Burns Road significantly. And I think in a positive way, don't get me wrong. So I thought it best to go ahead and present this so to the council and the, and the audience and the public would be able to understand what this grant is all about. Once again, I think because it really dovetails great into the mobility. It dovetails great into bicycles, slowing traffic down by narrowing lanes and things of that nature. So I just thought it best to bring it to your attention so you understand what we're applying for and the public can see it, so.
Thank you for that introduction. So the Transportation Alternatives Grant is an annual funding opportunity for construction costs for alternative modes of transportation from the Palm Beach TPA and FDOT. We've been fortunate in the previous two years. In 2019, we were awarded $335,661 for the installation of pedestrian crosswalk enhancements in various locations throughout the city. And that funding is approved for 2023. And most recently last year, we were awarded $888,487 for the construction of an eight-foot wide sidewalk and a five-foot wide bicycle lane on the north side of Kyoto Gardens Drive. And that funding is approved for 2024. So the total that we've received over the past two years is over $1.2 million, which is incredible. So little background on this project. It's Burns Road from Military Trail to Alternate A1A. It's a city-owned road. It was acquired from Palm Beach County in 1981. It currently exists as a four-lane divided road with six-foot wide sidewalks on the north and south side. The right-of-way width varies, and there are no bicycle facility improvements that currently exist on this road. This is a, a quick location map that shows the location of the bicycle, separated bicycle track on the south side of Burns Road right-of-way with Military Trail on the east side of the map and Alternate A1A on the west, on, I'm sorry, on the west side, and then Alternate on the east side. One of the key factors in the scoring of this grant is how well-connected the project is to various community facilities, such as transit hubs, shopping facilities, schools, and parks. So staff has gone ahead and created a community map to help aid in that review. And you can see right where the project is located, highlighted in yellow in the city's core. There are so many resources and even more as you go out into two miles and three miles. So the specific proposed project is a separated nine-and-a-half-foot-wide two-way bicycle track on the south side of Burns Road with a one-and-a-half-foot-wide raised concrete separator. The existing lanes can be narrowed, and the entire project fits within the existing right-of-way. So pictures can speak for a thousand words. So here's an existing cross-section of the 80-foot section of the right-of-way. And proposed, you'll see the two-way cycle track on the south side of the road. And then another example of the 100-foot section. We can see the after right here with the two-way cycle track on the south side of the road. And all of this can be accommodated by narrowing the existing lanes, which are quite wide. Some photos of the existing conditions on Burns Road on, from the south side where the cycle track will be constructed. The application was submitted this past Friday, February 26th, with a project narrative, photos, and maps, as well as the existing and proposed cross-sections, a signed and sealed cost estimate for $1 million, the full amount of construction funding that's available, proof of ownership. And the resolution of support from the facility owner is due Tuesday, April 27th. Tuesday, April 27th. As Mr. Ferris mentioned, this is an improvement that is listed in our city's mobility plan, and that is also a factor that is taken into consideration when the TPA scores these projects. We've received numerous letters of support from various community institutions, namely the White School, St. Mark's School, Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center, all of which are in close proximity to the proposed project, as well as the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce, always an excellent partner for the city. So with that, staff recommends approval of Resolution 162021. If approved, staff will submit the resolution to the TPA staff prior to the April 27th deadline. I would like to thank the city engineering department for helping to put together the technical aspects of the presentation, and it's my pleasure to present this in Florida Bicycle Month, which you recently just passed on consent on this, on this agenda. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I also have my director here, Natalie Crowley, as well as the city engineer.
All right, so what we'll do, before we do discussion, we'll just get a motion and a second to approve, and then we'll bring it back for discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 162021.
I'd happily second that.
All right. Now we're at the discussion part, you guys? You look like you had a question, Rochelle?
No question, I just think it's, it's a great addition to what we're trying to do in the, in the TOD area. It's definitely a missing piece of the puzzle. As the wife of an avid bike rider, anytime we can make things safer for those out on the road, it's a win-win, and it's definitely gonna be a great addition to that section of highway.
I'm good.
You gonna go ahead? All right, I'm happy to. Well, I can talk about roads and bikes and transportation for a really long time, so I'll just make it quick. I'm so glad that we've applied for this grant, because this grant specifically is for urbanized areas, just like what we're trying to do here. The support from the community ties it together. It's part of the long-range transportation plan that the TPA approves for 25 years out, and bike lanes here would be considered Tier 1, so I'm really hopeful that we would be approved for this grant, and it would be exactly in the perfect spot, and right within that circle that we love to look at as we look forward to what this city will grow and become. And I do think Burns Road will look very different, so I'm really thankful to our city manager and to our staff for bringing this out to the public now, because for all of us who've been taking our kids to the rec center for decades, and it will, it will look like a completely different world not too long from now. So I really appreciate that you're putting it out now, so that our residents can start getting used to it. Thank you.
The only question I have is, well, two questions. One, how it will link to future expansion of other bike lanes along Military Trail, and then of course, the further eastbound expansion on Burns Road. There are kind of full plans to have bike lanes run through the entire region, correct? And this will just feed into that?
Yes, the fortunate aspect of this improvement is that it's, it's in our mobility plan, so when the bike track was included in the mobility plan, it did take into consideration the, the other road network, the missing gaps. Now there are going to be transition points where the cycle track may merge into a completely different cross-section, and that's okay, because if you're on a bike, you can navigate through different means, whether you have to go into a separate bike lane, and then go into a separate track, or then maybe even go into a multi-use path, like we're proposing on Kyoto. The point is to create an interconnected multimodal network with options, and that's what we're trying to do here. The track is definitely unique, though. I mean, it's, it's, it would be the first track itself in Palm Beach Gardens.
So moving on to, you're talking about multimodal and Kyoto Drive, et cetera, you know, you're seeing a lot of these motorized bicycles and motorized vehicles that are not cars for the lazy bike riders around, you know? But, but in reality, but in reality, I mean, I think you're gonna see more motorized bicycles out there. Is there any discussion on how to handle the speed of these things, and how to utilize these, maybe this is a question for the TPA as much as it is for the city?
Sure, there's whole webinars where you have sessions that go into this discussion, because, you know, really, it, there can be quite, quite a lot of issues with electric scooters if they're not managed, or the speed of vehicles, and licensing, and minimum safety requirements, so that all comes into play. And I think as our city evolves, and, and this road network is constructed, and the multimodal network is constructed, you know, we're certainly going to have to address some of that, so it's, you know, our success is gonna also bring some challenges, and that's fine. I do know that we're playing, we're paying close attention to the, the national discussion on, on how to manage these, and certainly, whatever comes forward in Palm Beach Gardens is gonna be handled in the Palm Beach Gardens way. So we're gonna establish our own state safety standards, and we're gonna create our own regulatory framework to ensure that our city stays beautiful and safe.
Thank you.
There's nothing wrong with electric bikes. I have one. That's what you're just throwing me under the bus for that. So they're very cool, and they're also 10 speeds, and they come in fat tire version, and they are a little powerful, but they're still a bike. I tried to talk him into getting one.
Mine's stationary, so you're still moving out there, and I'm not, so.
Well, I tried to talk him into getting his wife one for, for her birthday, and instead she got a Cadillac, so, yeah. All right.
Next, next year, there's always another year, there's always another birthday. All in favor?
I won't say, Mark. All right, anyway, so we are, we're good with this? No further discussion?
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cares, four zero. We are at Items for Council Action. Any discussion, any topics to discuss? Chelsea?
Yeah, so, so we passed the proclamation for Bicycle Month, so while we're finishing talking about this new thing, I just want to let folks know, also from the TPA, there's a website called walkbikepalmbeach.org, where you can find out all kinds of information about pedestrian and bicycle-related things in Palm Beach County. And this month, being Florida Bicycle Month, which is now statewide, so for real bicycle nerds, we're pretty excited about that. The TPA, the Transportation Planning Agency for the county, has several different events, including a bike, and a lot of it is distance, so there's bike safety webinars and things like that, and there will be a group ride through West Palm on March 26th. If you want to really experience what's out there, I recommend you guys pop onto the TPA website and see what's going on, not just here in the gardens, but in the county as well. And thank you to our council for passing the proclamation.
Right on. That's what we're here for. That's what we do. Rochelle, anything? Mark? I'm only gonna bring up one thing, because I'm super proud of it, and you guys care. I know you care, you guys, everybody's had their hands in it. But, you know, I glow when we opened up the, the baseball field for our handicap kids, the Miracle Fields, and just the artwork really turned out stunning, Candace. Wasn't that, I mean, that was good stuff. So the video is, is the video on the website?
Not on the website.
Not on the website? Or what is it?
Both of you here?
Okay, I mean, I didn't have to bring it up, but that's just really cool. See, those kids over there, they're beyond handicap. You know, they're so challenged, and they're just, they're in their, you know, it's tough for them, and for them to be able to come to the gardens and play ball with all of our other kids that are playing ball is pretty cool. So I know you guys are all family, but I just wanted to say that. Thank you for staff and everybody doing your thing. Where's Dan? He ain't here. So that's it. If not, we have a city attorney report?
No, sir.
All right, meeting adjourned, all. Thank you. One hour.